14th, 2025, City Council Study Session. Assistant City Manager, you're filling in, so I will let you take the first agenda item and just kind of frame that for our discussion.
Our first item of the evening is actually an item sponsored by Councilmember Fears that would modify your council rules of procedure.
And if I'm correct, to make it short and sweet on this, it's just moving the citizens' comments.
Up in the order.
Well, it's moving the proclamations in front of citizens' comments.
Yes.
If I'm correct in my.
So your current process effectively has us suspending the rules almost on a
Weekly basis, right.
By meeting basis to allow for those proclamations ahead of the citizen requests. So this item would just switch that order.
Okay. Any discussion or thoughts? Everybody good with that? Any thoughts? Okay. That brings us to item number two. And Councilmember Perkins, right. And is there anyone in the chamber that would like to speak on item number one? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number two, resolution calling for Jackson County to create property tax relief for commercial property owners. And this was brought by Councilmember Perkins and Councilmember Wiley. Would either of you like to?
Sure.
Take the floor, fire away.
I'll start. Mr. Mayor, thank you so much to indulge us on this. As many of you know and have heard and read through the news media and/or if you own commercial property, you've been shocked by the high evaluations of your property that the county has placed upon you. There's been much news media regarding that. The ISA director has been on news outlets, quoted in the newspaper, talking about the disruptive nature of having such high tax burden on our commercial property that will affect our small businesses, has the potential to affect the small businesses in our district, in our city, and also our county as a whole. This resolution, all it does is just to put into some good language that we can present to the county legislature, that we would like to see them provide as much relief as possible to our commercial property owners and to let them know that we are not in favor of the continual increases that may be coming down the line. It's been very stressful for a lot of residents with the residential property. Now they've moved, the county has now moved to their commercial property. I hope next year they don't go to industrial property, which will also have a high impact with our citizens and our residents. So that's the purpose of this resolution, to put them more on notice and give them the communication to work with. So with that, I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Wiley for any further comment.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This whole issue reminds me of the classic quote, "It's deja vu all over again," because here we are once again facing the fallout of an assessment process that is out of touch with reality. It's incredibly frustrating that Jackson County hasn't learned from the past assessment cycles. As of today, there are still 54,000 unresolved appeals from the last round of residential assessments. In 2023, Jackson County had the highest assessment increase in the entire state, a staggering 24.35%, while the Consumer Price Index was only 6.5%. Go back to 2019, and we saw another huge spike, 19.75%, while inflation was just 1.9%. We've heard story after story of residents seeing their mortgage payments double or worse. Others are selling homes they've cherished for decades because they're afraid they'll lose them. This is not theoretical, this is happening, and it's happening to people in our community, and it's not acceptable. The City of Independence has fought back. We've taken this to court. We didn't win. And we've worked with our legislators in Jefferson City to advocate for real change. I'm happy to say there's been some progress. HJR 23, which would require Jackson County to have an elected assessor, like every other county in Missouri, is on the governor's desk. We hope it gets signed. And here we are now talking about commercial assessments. Here comes the deja vu. We're seeing small business owners hit with assessment increases as high as 1,500%, which is not sustainable. It's not fair. And it'll lead to businesses closing their doors, which means people losing their jobs and communities losing local staples that make our city special. In Jackson County, we have over 25 small businesses for every thousand residents. These are the risk takers and job creators who fuel our local economy. We cannot let an unchecked assessment process destroy that. Business owners are frustrated, and they should be. That's why Councilmember Perkins and I are bringing this resolution forward tonight. We're calling on Jackson County leadership, the county executive, the legislator, and the assessor's office to work with cities like ours to develop real relief strategies for commercial property owners. We're asking for partnerships with municipalities, chambers of commerce, and small business owners to create fair, thoughtful solutions that ensure we don't just survive this, but we build a stronger, more stable future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else on item number two? Anyone else? Okay. And is there anyone here to speak on item number two? Okay. With that being said, Councilmember McCandless, item number three is yours. The floor is yours, if you'd like it.
Thank you. This one is pills in comparison for importance compared to property relief for our businesses. This is actually just modernizing and clarifying our, basically our ATV ordinance, so our non pickup truck and car ordinance for motorized vehicles. I got a couple of questions and concerns from an HOA where they use a little mule to go around and do maintenance on the mailboxes and go down and trim bushes and things like that so they can carry their tools in the back. And they were concerned that they might not be in compliance with city code. So I've asked city staff to look at this, and so they have brought forward an ordinance that makes good sense. It provided the necessary changes to catch up with the more vehicles that are out there and to remind people of simple safety, things like, gosh, when you're driving one of these, you have to keep both your hands on the wheels, and you shouldn't stand up and drive them because we're seeing more bad behavior on our roads all the time. That is the reason for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item number three? Seeing no further discussion. Any citizens want to share their thoughts on this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
This is for the Assistant City Manager. With all train vehicles now, possibly the PD, are they illegal to be driven on the street now?
Under our current ordinance, yes. Obviously, city vehicles like that would not necessarily fall under the same ordinance, but this specifically calls out things like having turn signals and things like that that would comply with making those types of vehicles street legal. And all that is included in this modification that don't exist in current ordinance as it stands today.
So for someone who has an all train vehicle that lives somewhere up in the north side of the district, as long as they have the turn signals and these modifications that we're putting in the code now, that would turn it into a be, turn it into a street legal vehicle?
Yes. There are other things in this ordinance revision and in addition to the turn signals, but that is one of the specific things. And then, of course, just abiding by all existing traffic regulations, which is also something that I know in my neighborhood we see a couple four wheelers zipping by that are in no way obeying the rules of the road. So that is also specifically called out that they do have to adhere to posted speed limits and all other traffic regulations.
So with this modification, it happens every year for the last almost nine years. Soon as spring comes around, you have the little motorbikes, then you have the all train, the four by fours, some side by sides, but it's mainly the all terrain that are creating havoc within our parks, on our side streets, on our main arterial streets. So if this goes to infect, how will that modify how we police that when we can?
Well, this change wouldn't still allow them to be driving over parked grounds and things like that.
Correct.
So that would still be something that would have to be regulated and policed. This is simply allowing those vehicles on the road to follow the rules of the road. So anything where they're driving off-road is still something that would not be allowed under, even with these changes.
So enforcement with these vehicles who would not be modified would still be in the case of we've got to catch them in the act.
Correct.
Which is very difficult to do.
It is.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
I hear Councilmember Fears has a question. Oh, Councilmember Stewart has a question. I don't know if he can, if we can hear him. And I can read his question. His question is, if I'm reading it correctly, is would this limit them to just the streets? I'm assuming it would still be illegal to drive on state highways. So.
Yes, this is, this is just for our local roadways.
Okay, so it'd just be our streets. So if we parse this down and do some examples, Nolan Road is our street.
Our street.
So they could drive on our street. They couldn't go down 23rd Street because it's a state road theoretically. Forty Highway, you've got this, that between Kansas City and all of that. I don't know. Is that, how does it work?
So the way I read this, this doesn't actually give any more leeway to people to be on the road, except if they are modified to have a sign that says that they're a utility vehicle providing maintenance or some other thing that they have to notify why they're on the road. Do you read this to say that this opens it up for anybody who's got a four wheeler to go onto city streets?
No, and that's why, that's why I struggle a little bit to answer Councilman Perkins' question, because every one of these vehicles is different. So do they have the modifications to conform to this specific ordinance? That's really the question. Because there are several pieces, and I know they were attached to your packet. I mean, we could go through the modifications one by one if we need to. But no, it's not, I have a four wheeler, so I can drive down the road now. Not in any way.
Okay. And it also doesn't change that people can't drive on the little blue trace or places where it's restricted. All it's saying is if these vehicles are being used in the way they're supposed to be, they also have to be safe. So it doesn't let people buy crazy vehicles and dune buggies and all kinds of things and go around the neighborhood at 100 miles an hour. This is making some small tweaks to the existing ordinance.
Correct.
Fair? Okay. So maybe this requires us to spend a little more time making sure that we're consistent with that. There's absolutely no urgency in this issue, so if we want to take some more time to read it carefully and bring 10 examples forward and say, would this fit? Would that fit? I think that makes good sense for us. Thank you.
No, thank you. Anyone else? Other comments? Okay. Any citizens request on item number three? Anyone want to come up and speak? Okay. Seeing none. That brings us to facilities, city facilities construction update. So Assistant City Manager, fire away.
Okay. Well, as you all know, it's been a busy construction season, and we spend a lot of time talking about our traditional CIP, in-ground infrastructure projects. But what we don't get an update on as often are all of the vertical construction projects that we currently have underway or in design. So the new facilities we're going to talk about tonight are the new municipal commons facility, the fire stations, and the modifications to the Independence Utility Center for the Police Department to move into that building. So that will be referred to as Justice Center Phase One, just so we're consistent when you see it called out in the presentation. And without further ado, I'd like to introduce Brad Way and Danny Jonas with Project Advocates.
Good. Thank you, Lisa. Good evening. Mayor and City Council, I'm Brad Way and Danny Jonas with Project Advocates. We are your owners' representative for these various projects that we're going to be going through and just really giving you kind of a brief update of where each one of them stands, where we're at schedule-wise. So to get right into it, so these are the six different projects that we're currently working on. Like Lisa mentioned, the Municipal Commons Building, that renovation is currently under construction. And I don't know, what are we, 50% complete, 70% complete, something like that? So it is moving right along. The Justice Center, she mentioned the Phase One, which is really the utility center renovation for the Police Department. And then Phase Two is the full Justice Center campus right now. The IUC is in pre-construction, but it's going to start construction the middle of August, so about a month from now, that'll start construction. The campus is in schematic design, and once we get that schematic design complete, our contractor will be budgeting it and we'll be looking at it ourselves. Fire Station Number Eight and the Training Center are, the design is in process with WSKF Architects, and budgeting is kind of ongoing with both of those projects. And Fire Station Five is in conceptual design, has been completed, so we have some early budgets for that, as well as Fire Station 11. And any questions that you have at any time, just holler it out.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Can we just go back to that slide for just a minute? So just a couple of reminders for people who pay attention a little bit here and there, that the, we are in the process of getting a valuation on the utility center because that will have to be purchased back from the utility by the city. So we are looking at the valuation on that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And that Fire Station Eight, Five, and Eleven have been bonded, so those are already have a payment mechanism taken care of.
They do.
And the Municipal Commons was a building that was also bonded by the city's current authority, and that includes the renovation costs are in that bond.
Correct.
Okay. I just, I don't want people to be confused because we called it the Justice Center before when we had the geo bond. This portion of it, we knew we could swing that first part. It was the bigger part. And when you say design, you mean redesign? Like looking at this in, what do we have to have? What would we like to have?
Right, exactly. Yes. Going through the programming and, and all the layout, everything, and picking color selections and carpets and really that whole process.
And whether it could be staged. Okay. I just want people to understand that we didn't pass that portion of the geo bond. So now this is Phase Two. How do we think about that? Do we have to do this over 20 years? What, what are the pieces and how do we finance it? Just, thank you very much.
Yeah, and there's a couple more slides at the, at the end of this that'll go into further detail about that.
So really, from a schedule summary standpoint, you can see that the blue is the Justice Center Phase One that I said we're, you know, just starting construction. It'll complete in the first quarter of 2025. The red is the Municipal Commons Project. It's, as I said, under construction now. It should finish up and be ready for what we call activation and move-in by the end of this year. The green is ISF, the Fire Station Number Five. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah. Fire Station Eight and the Training Center starts construction early next year, is what the plan is. And then it actually completes in the second quarter of 2027 for both of those buildings. Then the Fire Station Five should start in the fourth quarter of '26 and be completed by the fourth quarter of '27. And then the last piece is the Fire Station 11 that should start in the second quarter of '27 and complete in the second quarter of '28. So you can see, we kind of have them staggered. So there is some overlap between the construction side, but that's, that's purposeful. Different contractors for the Fire Station from the Justice Center. Any questions on that? So Municipal Commons has a $21.5 million total budget, both hard cost and what we call soft cost for it. Construction's in progress. We should be moving in Level Two early October. Level Three is mid-November, and Level Four then is later in November. And then Level One is the completion of the project should be by the end of this year, mid-December. And I've got a few pictures of kind of the progress of that as of last couple days, I think.
Last Wednesday?
Yeah. So, so you can take a look at those and, and kind of see how the progress is coming along. So the Justice Center Phase One, the Utility Center Building renovation, that has a $5 million total budget for it. We say pre-constructions in process. You also approved the GMP with McCall and Gordon last Monday, I think it was, for their contract, so they're ready to start. They should be starting middle of August for that project. So that's getting off and going. It'll start mid-August, should be complete early February, and then we'll, over that next month, be doing move-in and furniture and everything else that goes in the, in the Justice Center Phase One project. And by about the first week of March, that project should be complete. The Phase Two piece then, the really the large Justice Center campus, still working on the budget side of that. As I mentioned, the architects were just finishing schematic design so that we can put a firmer budget onto it and looking at all the different phases that potentially could, could work around that campus. So they've completed the schematic design or just finishing that here by Hayford Walker is the architect. And so those are done by the end of this month. McCall and Gordon will be doing the budgets along with us and our checking of that. That should be done early September, and then still figuring out the financing piece of what can go and in what order. I think we have, yeah. So this is the color picture of the campus. The IUC building is in the orange, kind of right there in the middle, the existing building that's going to start renovations. The whole yellow areas are the, the Police Department expansion and courts projects, as well as a lot of the site work that's going to go on. And then we have, and the light blue is the K-9 facility, bomb and crash, motor vehicle building, the SWAT and tech phase, firing range, Training Center. So this is the way we're budgeting the project so we can pull it apart, what can go first, what can be funded, what makes the most sense. So as soon as we get that done in the next month, six weeks, we'll be able to talk through with the, with the city and the departments on what the best next steps are. Fire Station Eight and the Training Facility has a $21.4 million budget out of the $50 million total budget for the three fire stations and the Training Center. The construction documents are in progress right now with WSKF Architects. And then Turner is our construction manager for that project. And then we're finalizing those drawings so that Turner will be able to go out for bids and start getting the subcontractors and vendor community involved. So those documents should be done in October. We'll go in for permitting and bidding, then November, kind of through January, hope to start construction by February of '26. And then it has about a year duration for construction. And that's both Fire Station Eight and the Training Facility that's kind of on the other side. Fire Station Five has a $13.3 million budget out of the $50 million. The conceptual design's complete. Right now we're, have that project on hold until later this fall, is that when we'll continue the design for Fire Station Five. So we think design development will be complete in the spring, documents by summer of '26, construction start fall of '26, and then it has about a year duration for construction. Eleven, pretty similar timeframe and cost, 15.3 million of the total budget. The conceptual design is complete. And again, we're staggering that, so we wouldn't kick off that design completion until next summer. So we think that'll be complete by early 2027 for design documents. Construction start that spring of '27 and about a year duration for construction. And that are the slides that we have. Any other questions?
Any questions? Any questions? Please proceed.
Just to clarify, back on the Independence Commons, when you talked about Level One, Two, Three, and Floor, are those the floors? Were they like scheduled? Okay.
It's the floors.
Okay.
It's the floors.
Just making sure.
Yep.
And we have a good communication plan with our teammates for their staged move to this site?
Yes. We, Power and Light has already vacated the third floor of the IUC. Municipal Services vacates the end of this month. IPL has relocated back to the Service Center, where actually they originally came to IUC from. Municipal Services is scattering to a few different facilities. We all came out of different spaces, so we'll be at City Hall, Rock Creek, Sewer Maintenance, lots of different places that you'll find us in the field, obviously a lot. Customer Service is on the first floor of IUC. And because that floor isn't being modified in this phase of the renovation, they can stay for the duration, so nothing changes until they're ready to move into the Commons. And yes, Rebecca has been, and the comms team has been putting out communications, and she's constantly checking in on what new there is to share with staff about the progress of that building.
And so I'm sure there's some frustration about having to move twice, but that keeps us within our budget to be able to not add additional expenses. Is that the reason for the double move?
Yes, it's, it's definitely not ideal. However, as recently as our meeting, our check-in meetings last week, it appears that inflation numbers are still coming in at approximately 1.5 to 1.8% a quarter. So any delay we have in the project just increases the cost overall. So really trying to be good stewards and move things as quickly as we responsibly can, so we're not adding cost onto those projects.
Can you pass our deep appreciation on to the teammates who have to move? Because getting disturbed from your office is like the worst thing ever. So on, on behalf of the citizens who pay taxes and who are grateful for that cost savings, we appreciate their indulgence. Thank you.
Happy to do so.
Anyone else? Other comments on item number one on the city facilities? Anyone else? Okay. Very, very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for having us.
Absolutely. Thank you. Next is IPL Charter Governance Review, and... You're doing it all today.
I am. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Deputy City Manager Lisa Reynolds. Just going to give an overview tonight, basically recap the conversations that we've had to this point about utility governance, kind of where we've come from and where we're going, and the next steps in that process. So again, just as a recap, you all have lived this for the last few years, but just a reminder, this goes back to the adoption of the city's action plan in, in 2023. Out of that, in April of '23, the council directed staff to evaluate the future ownership and governance of IPL. As we all know, DKMT was hired to do that analysis, and both of those things were weighed, right? Do we, do we maintain ownership of the utility? Do we look to sell the utility? So that was one piece. And then the separate piece of that, a second piece of that study was, what is that governance? If we keep it, what does the governance look like going forward? Does it stay the same with council making the primary decisions and then the, the Public Utility Advisory Board still being an advisory board to the council? Or do we create, create a brand-new board? So in August of '24, council received those recommendations. Again, I don't intend to read this to you. The biggest thing that came out of that meeting in August was basically the credence that was given to the creation of an independent utilities board. And then the fact statistically, 70% of similar-sized municipalities are governed by a standalone board. In September of '24, council adopted the resolution directing the city manager to review the current governance model, along with possible alternatives. And then, it's not listed, but in April and June of this year, we held council roundtable discussions to talk about both of those things. And again, as you're aware, we talked about not only governance structures and possibilities, but should it govern IPL water and wastewater? Should it just be IPL? Should it be some combination of those three? And what does that look like? So where we have landed is that we would create a standalone board that would govern IPL only, at least in the beginning, with the potential to absorb the other two utilities down the road. down the road based on how this goes. So to do that, there would be charter changes required, potentially. So these are the sections of the current charter as it is written today and, and the key points of each of those sections. So it defines the electric utili, oddly, it defines the electric utility because in the charter, IPL is the only recognized utility in the charter. At the time it was written, Water was private and American Water Company and the Sanitary Sewer Utility had not yet formed on its own. It was still a part of Public Works at the time. So again, the operations are defined, provides for future utilities. The establishment of the existing Public Utility Advisory Board is defined in 317 that the utility should operate in a businesslike manner with no general revenue profits and with no assisting other departments or the general fund, and that profits are to go to rate relief. And then in 3.18, the cooperation of council with PUAB is discussed. Those are current. And the modified version was attached to your packet and is available for the public to reference as well. We're going to spend a little bit of time going through each of the highlights of each of these modified sections and what they would look like now. So the new definition of public utilities would include water and wastewater and leave it open for any other future acquired utility, not saying they're plans in the works, but just leaving the door open because again, the existing charter doesn't contemplate that at all. In Section 3.13, the use of public utilities for economic development. So this is a brand-new section. And you'll see as we go through this, there are considerably more sections in this proposed charter modification than exist, so the numbering doesn't, isn't one-for-one if you're looking at one section of the old charter to the new. So this would be a new section that does authorize the use of the utilities to promote economic development, includes offering utility-related incentives and participation in development projects. It does, of course, require compliance with laws, financial stability and alignment with the city's budget and plans, and it gives the city council to, the, the ability to adopt policies for transparency and accountability. In 3.12, the definition, did I go? Yep, went the wrong way. Okay. 3.14, the governance of public utilities. We have here the creation of the public utilities board. So again, this defines that it would be the electric utility only, in, at least in the beginning. And again, you see, water and sewer utilities would stay controlled by the city and by council and still have regular meetings with the PUAB. And then in 3.15, the new board would consist of nine members. So just for reference, the existing PUAB is seven members. Both are proposed that they would still be members, or their membership would be appointed by council. The residency and the specific background and requirements for the public utility board are different, just looking for that strong business, utility, engineering kind of experience, as this board would be making some of the more operational decisions instead of just advising on policy. And the new board would have staggered terms to ensure continuity of the board. Again, council-nominated appointments and vacancies would be filled in the same manner. This is the same as the PUAB stands today. Different than the PUAB, the board would have left a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary. Meetings are public record. That's the exact same as the PUAB. Quorum and compensation details are provided in this section. That is not to say that these members would be paid. That was discussed, and there is not a salary associated with serving on the board, but if they were to go to a conference or travel for a meeting with another utility board or something like that, then those are the costs that we're talking about being reimbursed there. Board must be nonpartisan in 3.18, and members cannot hold other public offices or be involved in political organizations. And that one-year prohibition on employment is they could not leave the board and then immediately come to work for the utility. The duties of the board would be to control and operate the electric utility, to manage contracts, properties, and assets, and we'll talk about this later, but can't sell the utility properties without voter approval. Again, as it stands today, the PUAB is advisory and typically advisory on policy. This is very much a board that's getting into the weeds of operations and making those operational decisions and more decisions on projects and things like that. The board would have broad powers to manage the electric utility, including the hiring, purchasing, including hiring, purchasing, and contracting. Specifically, the hiring there would be the general manager, or what we refer to as the director of IPL today, would report to this board instead of to the city manager for evaluations and things like that. So they would have the power to hire and fire, as it is written currently. Council does hold a public hearing and can amend the budget that is put forward from the board, and the budget becomes effective upon council's approval. The budget approval is deemed an appro, an appropriation. So this is, today we approve the budget, but then every single project we still bring back for permission to go and execute what was approved in the budget. If it's, if the budget is accepted as an appropriation, the board could go and execute projects. It wouldn't have to come back to council for every single decision, as long as it was a budget-approved project. And then payments would may, be made by the electric utilities comptroller. The call-out for a comptroller is also a new position. We do have a finance manager in Power and Light today, and again, that was a recommendation that also came out of that DKMT study. But having a comptroller, also called a controller for pri, in the private world, but that person is on the hook for basically financial ethics and transparency and reporting and making sure we adhere to all guidance and regulations out there as far as they pertain to finance and accounting. And that position also under the control of the board. In 2.23, all utility revenues deposited in the city's depository and the comptroller appointed to the board and bonded, which is all brand-new language compared to what exists today. The board would follow accounting procedures for private utilities and provide regular financial reports to the city and, of course, would have to have an annual audit. For purchase and contracts, this is a little bit diff, well, no, this adheres to, purchasing policy requires competitive bidding for anything over $50,000, so that doesn't change. And then combined purchasing with other city departments is still encouraged. Coming before you on the agenda Monday will be a fuel oil purchase and it's multiple departments, and we do that, obviously, so there is economy of scale to be had there for things that require mobilization. If we can pay that once, instead of each department paying it, there's savings there, so that will still be encouraged. The rate-making provisions, the board would be on the hook for setting electric utility rates, subject to council approval. And a public would hearing, a public hearing would be required before those rates were put into place. Board appointments and appoints and evaluates the general manager, as we discussed, and the employees, the other employees of the utility are subject to the normal personnel policies and procedures as they are today. And then 3.28, the board pays an amount in lieu of taxes to the city. So pilot is how we, if you refer, hear that referred, that stands for payment in lieu of taxes. That is something that all three utilities pay today and that continues. Something that is different in this current modification is written is that the utility would provide free electricity for city-owned buildings and/or street lighting.
Can I ask a quick question there?
Yes.
All right. So, and, Ms. City Counselor, my concern is, with legal opinions that have been given in the past, are we approaching or conflicting with that? Because we can do a pilot, or we can do free services, was the way the ruling was said in the past, but we can't do both. And this appears to be, in my opinion, that we are stepping over the line there and trying to attempt to do both, and I have really serious concerns about that. So, and I don't know if you've had enough time to investigate this from a legal perspective to see what's going on, but I, I, I have serious concerns on, on this particular section with regards to that, that perspective.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, I'm not familiar with that opinion, but I, we can review that and get back to you.
Okay. I just think it's really important, before we move on with this, that, that, we've got to get that clarified because that's going to be an issue that, that people will bring up because it has been brought up in the past when we start talking about IPL and how that works. I, I think we're going to get, we will get some serious pushback if we proceed with that, the way that it's written right there, in my opinion. I could be wrong, and I'm open for discussion here on this floor, but...
And, and one of the things that we have asked the IPL director to look at is, what does that cost look like? And if it was an offset of the pilot percentage comes down to provide that, so it, it wasn't an "and," if that makes sense. So those are numbers that we've, we have already asked for and just waiting to see what those look like to continue the discussion.
Right. And so I've got, so, yeah, I, I would love to have your opinion on that, to look into that and see what, so that we're not in violation of that. I think we're going to get some serious pushback if we, if we push that and, and we do try to push on both, considering how voters have worked, looked at this way back in the, in the eighties.
Of course, we'll look into it.
Thank you.
Anything else on that before we move on?
Do you want questions now, Mr. Mayor, or wait until the end of her presentation?
I'm sorry. It's open, if you're okay with it now, I'm good with that. Please proceed.
Okay. On that same issue, I, so the question is, we have to light our buildings that are municipally-owned. Question is, do you pay that out of sales tax or do you pay that out of the utility? Both of these paid by the citizens of Independence. So it doesn't cost them more to light a building if it's done through electric or, or sales tax through the general fund. The, the bill is the same. I actually feel, even though our general fund is so strained, that it should be out of general fund. And the reason I feel that way is, if, if I'm somebody owning a fixed income, I can control what I spend in my purchases at Target or Walmart, but I can't really control a lot about my electric bill. So I would prefer that we were paying it out of general fund rather than out of the electric company. I just think that it feels more fair. So that's my opinion, and I would like to have that part stricken.
So to clarify, you're wanting to actually change the language right now and how this is written?
Obviously, this is a study session. We, we aren't going to rewrite the language right here, but I'd like for our legal folks to look at that and see that paying for our electricity would come not from the utility. Now, we're, we're paying a municipal rate. That municipal rate would be at the purview of this board. They would make a decision about up or down. That would be their policy recommendation. But having that enshrined in, in the charter, to me, doesn't make sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, please proceed. Do we, well, I don't think we need a motion to remove that. We just want to do, take that under review for, or do you want to remove that out of the charter discussion now? I think that could be more of a policy discussion later after, we don't need to have that in the charter now, is, I guess is what I'm saying.
I agree.
That could be a policy decision the council and/or the board can make at that time.
Because we, I mean, we can't make motions here to make modifications. I was just expressing my opinion that I think it doesn't belong in this charter.
But I, just as a, I think you have a great point, council member. As a legislative body, I recognize we don't vote here, but if there's no objections, you know, I would say we proceed with having a, a sample written like that so we can look at it.
Sure.
We move along. If there's no objections, or if there are objections, then we write it two ways and then we vote on it when we go to the democratic process. But I, if no one has any objections, we'll proceed with that being written that way. Okay? Okay. Very good. Thank you. Very good. And please forgive me and, and thank you very much.
No worries. Okay. So moving along, almost, almost through them. Disposition of net income, there, this basically just gives joint control of the fund balance to council and the board and calls out more than just rate reduction as an allowable use of that fund balance, specifies that it can also be for emergencies, improvements, and debt reduction, which is, again, not part of the current charter. Another major point that has come up recently when it comes to the sale of the electric utility, this does put into the charter language that a utility can't be sold without voter approval. The board would have the right of eminent domain, so to take things to condemnation for CIP projects. And the areas of service, of course, this kind of goes without saying, but the board would operate the electric utility within the city limits and within our service area, and that the board would have the right to acquire property outside the city for city utility operations. So it's a whirlwind tour of the proposed amendments. Really, at the end of the day, what staff is looking for is simply, basically what we're doing right now. Are you comfortable with the language as it is? Are there modifications? And if there are modifications, what are those? And then, once we get the document to a point where you're comfortable, do you want us to proceed with taking it for voter approval? And before you is a list of potential dates. We can't use the February 3rd as that's a primary and bond election-only date. November, obviously, would be very quick since the certification date would be this August, and we never know what else is. It sounds like there might be a couple interesting things with the county on a November. But again, all are options and just some before you. So that would be the direction that staff's looking for. And with that, I am open to questions.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone other questions? Please proceed.
So I have a lot of thoughts on this. Before I was on the council, I served on the utility board, and let me tell you what an education that was. I had to come up to speed in a hurry on the ins and outs of electricity and transformers and staffing and what the energy market looks like and buying energy futures and options versus actual energy. And I can tell you that I spent a ton of time to understand that better. We have so many other decisions to make that I'm not sure that my colleagues have enough dedicated time to really do a deep dive into the utility. And I'm sure Mr. Hagen Deffer appreciates how many questions I asked him and how much time I spent with his, him and his staff and probably doesn't have the time to do that for everybody here. For, for that reason, and this is not the first study that we've had that has said, this is a really clunky model to run a municipal utility. There's the Public Service Commission that does the utilities that are owned by, by private ownership as opposed to municipal ownership, and that's a mechanism for them thinking about the economics and how they set rates, et cetera. This would function more as our own Public Service Commission. And I appreciate that my colleagues spent a lot of time with Springfield and understanding their model. They were kind enough to go through and talk about the pros and cons of the way that they run an absolutely exceptional utility. Theirs is more complicated. Actually, their bus system is run through this consortium as well. And so we learned a lot, but I also think it was clear that we are using a really antiquated model to run what is the future of everybody's electricity. People expect reliability, they need a durable system, they need safety of the people who run our, our utility and the safety of the people in the community, and then affordability is another issue for everybody here, both for business and for residents. But we have a really, really, really resident-heavy base, so much higher than Springfield, much higher than Columbia, which means that our residents bear all the costs of utility upgrades. We have the opportunity to partner in some really amazing ways with some of our industrial customers to modernize our electrical grid. It takes a much more facile and in-depth... It takes a much more facile and in-depth board to be able to help guide us with those decisions. It's important to remember that the budget and the rates still come back to the council. However, we've had a really political utility in the past, and that's not good for the utility, it's not good for the ratepayers. And I want to be sure that we have people making really good decisions, who are thinking on a 20-year timeframe instead of on a four-year timeframe, like we are. I, I will say that I think this is the most important decision for the future of the business community, the industrial community, and the residents for the future 20 years, because energy is only going to get more and more precious, and this is our time to, to make that choice. I actually think November is the time to do this election. Looks like Jackson County would split the cost with us. I would absolutely keep this narrow. No other charter changes, only this one question about adding a more professional board to regulate the utility. So that's my very long answer to when we should have this election. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please proceed.
Ms. Mayor, I, I just want to talk for a minute about the question of how we take this information and the ideas that are before us to the, the public, to the voters. And the question really I have is, we talked in our last meeting about the need to have some town hall meetings or something to that effect, and I don't see anything in here about that, and I also don't see anything in the timeline relative to any of the voting scenarios. So I just kind of am curious what the thought might be of either staff or the council, the rest of the council, on how we might do that, because I just feel that it's going to be really critically important that we hear what the citizens want to say about this particular issue, because, like Councilmember McKenna, I think this is a major, major decision for our city, and sets us up in many ways for lots of really important things and decisions to be made in the future relative to Independence Power and Light. And so I'm just wondering, you know, how we might best get the input of the community and hear what they have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any thoughts on Councilmember Fears? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with what's been said here tonight, and the weight of this decision and how important it is. I, I also agree that we should focus on the board and on, on just making that change to the charter. I mean, we have to take this to the voters, and, and I think we should, I think we should be more focused on that, and I think we probably need another roundtable. I think we need some, I agree that we need some town halls. I would also like to see this on the ballot in November, and I think if that's the case, we've got some work to do. Thank you.
Can I interject from just a staff perspective? Ideally, we, we would love to do the town halls, and I think we can do them in conjunction with existing PUAB meetings, and also special call, either council meetings, PUAB meetings, just set up town halls, and we absolutely can facilitate that. But I think it would be best if you all have consensus on the document before. Not that it can't be modified following the public hearings and things to solicit that input and execute that input, but if we go to a town hall before this body agrees on the document, it probably won't produce as quality a product as it would otherwise. So we are happy to facilitate, to facilitate those just as soon as we get this piece. So I agree, another roundtable would probably be best, so we can hammer out the details of how to narrow this language to get that going, and we are happy to set that up.
Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I, I would agree with that, and I think that, that it would be important for us to be as much in agreement as we possibly can be before we take anything to the voters. I just think that's really going to be important in the process.
Thank you.
And I, and I would be in favor of another roundtable as well. What, what, again, is the date that we have to make a decision on before, you know, before we put it on in November ballot?
The final certification date is August 26th.
Okay, that, so that gives us a little time, so, okay. Thank you.
And Councilmember Stewart, do you have a question? And can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yep, fire away.
Okay, so, I agree so far with everything as far as the makeup of the board. What I highly do not, what I do not like is the fact that we're trying to make some other charter changes regarding the business-like manner, and as far as that IP pay for the city buildings. So I agree with, as far as the paying the electricity of the city buildings, I agree with Councilmember McKenna on that point. I think it should be taken out. Obviously, that can't be done here. But my big, my other big concern is, we're taking out the portion of the business-like manner. I think if we put that in the front of the voters, I don't think, I don't think it'll be approved. So that's the reason I think we should just focus on the governance board portion.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have for now, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Other discussion or thoughts?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. So, a lot of discussion, a lot of good discussion. The July 28th, on July 28th, the council does have a roundtable already scheduled. I would suggest that maybe we, I would suggest that we have our thoughts more concise for that discussion, and that could be part of the major topic, as well as the other discussions that we were going to have regarding the justice centers and the other possibilities for approvals for the, our citizens to consider. But I would put this at the top of the list, to have our thoughts concise for that, so we can have the language ready to go. And I would suggest that we would start having at least one, if not two, community engagements. I'd be happy to hold one in the first district to start this conversation. Regarding the business-like manner, I was the one that really kind of started that conversation a little bit more in-depth. I am certainly able to step back a little bit and just do the governance model itself with the board, and not use this language, if that is appeasing to the council and also to the voters. But I think at some point, this council or, and/or the board, if it gets there, must take a look at this, not to use it as, I've heard the term of a cash cow, but any utility who develops itself must have, have the flexibility to develop and use economic incentives so it can build upon itself, so we don't have such a large disproportionate amount of burden being placed on our residents, instead of commercial and industrial, industrial, like other municipalities have, other utilities have. So it's been determined that the city is going to keep this, and we're going to run this, this utility as its assets that we have. By doing so, we must make this, all the investments, all the necessary changes to make this as lean and mean and as economically efficient as we possibly can going into the future.
Thank you, Councilmember. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to be thoughtful, that we are smart about our language, because to run a utility in a business-like manner means that you pay down appropriate debt, that you purchase land that you need to run the utility, that you invest in the infrastructure, and that you make development partnerships around acquiring, purchasing, and managing new energy. So those things are the definition of a business-like manner. So I, I just want to be sure that we are thoughtful about our language when we put that particular phrase in there, so that we remind ourselves what that means. So it would read, "That the utility shall be run in a business-like manner to include excellence in operation, paying, managing debt, paying down debt when appropriate, et cetera, et cetera." Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
And just to carry on the conversation with Councilwoman McKenna, as Assistant City Manager, it was five years ago that we paid down debt service and also gave a rebate of 120-some dollars back to all 52,000 ratepayers. Does that sound about right, about five years ago?
Yeah, about five years.
Yeah, so, I mean, it was, so, we need to keep working on that and doing that, just like we've, we've had before, but we need to get it more aggressive with our utility and also with our new governance board that can really help us manage these assets going into the future.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Could we do something like letting the utility board propose economic development incentives case by case, instead of permanently embedding it in the charter? Maybe like with council approval or through ordinance? Something like that?
If, if I may give you my thoughts, councilmember, I really want this board to be a governance board and be able to make decisions like that. And I, I, I don't want to, I don't, if we're going to do that, then we're just, we're just a super, you know, PUAB board like that, because we're, we're basically seeing those things, because who knows how many, how many of those things would come to us on a, on an annual or yearly basis. And so if we're going to do this, and we're going to do that model, I say we give this board that authority to do that, just like we're giving them the authority to hire an executive director and, and run that and, and go with those processes. That's, that's personally my thought. You know, certainly, this is a democratic body, and the body can do that, but anyway, that's, that's my personal thought. If we're going to, if we're going to create a board, let the board do it.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So I just would want to say that, you know, to me, operating in a business-like manner, which I fully agree with, is not exclusive of operating and, you know, having, making good use of economic development partnerships and opportunities of that nature. Those are not, those are two different things, in, in my opinion. And so I, I just believe that we probably, on the 28th, when we meet, we probably need to have some more discussion, and maybe some more examples from staff regarding the kinds of things that we might expect to be asking the, the governance board to, to consider. Because I, I think, I'm in agreement that, you know, we are asking this board to govern the, the utility with a few exceptions of, of our involvement. So I think it's important that we give them, you know, the, the reins to do that. That's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have other thoughts or ideas with that? Okay, but it sounds like if we're going to try to hit an August 26 deadline, we've got to get a lot of stuff done between now and then, and if I'm, if I'm hearing everyone correctly, and I want to state this, so everybody's on the same, on the same page, we're just talking about the governance perspective of this, that's really the only part of it that we're talking about, correct, if I'm, if I'm hearing everybody?
And by governance, it's this entire document, not any of the other charter changes that were proposed, is what I was referring to.
Right.
From our previous charter votes. Thank you.
Okay. Sounds good. You know, the other, five other charter amendments that we had in April of this year or so, for clarification purposes. Anyone else? Okay. Very, very good.
Thank you.
With that, thank you very much. And now we've got reports on boards and commissions. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A recommendation has been made to appoint Pamela Jean Smith to the Independence Park Commission. A recommendation has been made to appoint Charlene Gray to the Public Safety Tax Oversight Committee. Staff request direction to add resolutions to the next regular meeting, appointing these individuals to those boards.
Any further discussion on any of that? Anyone else have any closing comments before we wrap up?
None tonight.
Okay. With that, and seeing no other comments or nothing else on the agenda, we will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.[1796.76][1796.76]